Katie, would you do the roll, please?
Kus.
Here.
Gage. Harris. Isom.
Here.
Kuyfer.
Here.
Seereton.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Leadership.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us down to public hearings, one on Resolution Number 15-2614, amending the 215 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide for supplemental appropriations for the Public Health Department, $1,885,807. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Hearing none. It brings the public hearing on Resolution Number 15-2609, adopting the 216 General Government Budget. Anybody here to speak to that? Again, seeing none. Brings us to a public hearing on Resolution Number 15-2610, adopting 216 Ketchikan Public Utilities Budget. Seeing none. That moves us down into Communications. We have a number of budget updates that we'll take up during the budget deliberations. Brings us down to persons to be heard. Lori Poole.
Good evening. My name is Lori Poole. I reside at 94 Pacific Court. I am speaking tonight as a member of the Museum Advisory Board. Included in your agenda packet tonight are memos from the City Manager, the Museum Director, and our Board Chair, Terry Wonzar, as well as minutes from our December 1st MAB meeting. They all do a good job of explaining how we came up with the current conceptual design for the first floor renovation of the Centennial Building. I am here tonight to ask for your support for this project. Since we last came to you at the October 1st meeting, our board has met several times with museum staff, your engineering department, and the architects that were selected to work on this renovation design. We have spent numerous hours trying to come up with a plan that the majority of the group would agree on. I believe this plan tonight represents a good compromise between all parties while still addressing the multifunctional needs of this building. This plan is more exhibit space than the previous plan presented in October, but still includes needed program space, expanded room for the ADA compliant bathrooms, prep area, and storage space. We have included small offices for the Director and her assistant, which are integrated into a larger reception area that can be used for flexible exhibit space while allowing for better visitor traffic. The MAB Board has worked to include as much exhibit space as we can while making the space multifunctional to meet all needs of the museum operations. While we are happy to increase the exhibit space, we realize it will require more staffing. Therefore, we respectfully submit our request that you restore the exhibit curator position. Today's museums are multi-dimensional spaces where all visitor types, whether local school children, tourists, or individuals with disabilities, are able to view the collection and also participate in hands-on activities and programs. A museum building must also be able to provide adequate storage to continue accepting donations as well as to protect and preserve our existing collection. I believe this plan addresses those needs. I would like to thank my fellow board members, the City Museum, and engineering staff, and the architects for their commitment to this project. We've all spent many hours to try to develop this plan. It has been our goal as a group to come up with a compromise that we could present to you tonight. I would like to thank the City Council for considering this project, and I hope you will honor our time spent and our commitment to the museum by supporting this plan. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Chat, can you shift the microphone? Thank you.
There we go. I'm Chat Hugo. I am here as a member of the Museum Advisory Board, and I want to, just without going over things that Lori did, I want to talk about the effort that was went through to make this plan something that the community would benefit from and get the most good we could from the money that we were told was in the budget. And I think that while not everybody was thrilled with the outcome, I think it is something that we are all, or the majority of us, were pleased with. And that the design is one that is going to serve the community effectively. It is going to provide the staff with what they asked for while taking into account what we received from the community as requests. And concerns of the community were addressed as well as we could considering the budget and considering the needs of the library staff. I think this is a very workable plan and has the ability to serve the community for a long time to come. It addresses security. It addresses a number of issues. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Chat? Thank you, Chat.
Good evening. Sonia Alvarez, resident of the city. And I've been a resident of the city for 40 years and have been associated with the museum from, I first moved here in the early 70s. I'm also a member of the Museum Advisory Board, and I might add that myself and Lori Poole and Chat Hugo are unofficially here. We are not here through a vote of the board itself. We're speaking as members, but not through the board. I'm here, my intention is to explain the design process that we went through, how we got to this plan. As an architectural designer myself, I think I have a different perspective about certain kinds of constraints and how we got to this plan. As Mr. Hugo said, it was, the plan you have before, it was decided by a majority vote. There still is a lot of opposition to the plan. And I think that as you make your final decision, that you might want some additional information. As the architects themselves said, there still is some wiggle room for some changes. And I have received the packet that you have, and I wanted to add that the two letters there, the one from Lacy Simpson and from our Chair, Terry Wonzar, were not shared with the board. So, I just found, read those letters today, and they were forwarded to me by the clerk. So, there are some other issues, but I think that as you make your final decision, that you should have some additional information. So, I request that at the point of discussion on the agenda that I be asked to come forward, and then I can present my concerns.
Is there anything further that you want to do under the persons to be heard?
Anything additional?
Yeah.
Just wanted to thank the council for the extension of time to let the board work with the staff and the architects. And to, I believe that the council has the, gives the support to this project. That's an assumption that I've made. I've always felt that the council is very, very supportive. But there is some wiggle room, and I think it would be good in making the final decision, which will affect the community as well as this staff and staffs in the future. And so, that all the information needs to be on the table. Thank you.
Being that she is asking to come forward during that session, is there any objection from the council? I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
That brings us down to, is there anybody else in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign that versus to speak? Thank you. Bring this down to consent agenda. I would like to move under six unfinished business to the finalization of sale agreements for surplus-owned property to Greg Updike. It was deferred from December 30. Does anybody have anything else? I think that's about all I saw. Okay, hearing none. Katie, would you read the items, please?
Sure. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I need a motion with that?
I'll second.
Move, seconded.
And adding six, too.
Okay, approval of minutes, special meetings of November 30th and December 8th, and regular meeting of December 3rd, 2015. The award of contract number 1534, which is the janitorial services for the Ketchikan Public Library to HBAA Janitorial Services. Resolution Number 152612, support of full funding for the State of Alaska Municipal Harbor Facility Grant Program in the FY 2017 State Capitol Budget. Resolution Number 152613, support of the addition of Port and Harbor's employees to the list of employees covered by AS 12.5.135. Exempting the procurement of Police Department annual records, maintenance system, and computer-aided dispatch software licensing and maintenance support from competitive bidding with Huber and Associates Incorporated. Resolution Number 152614, amending the 2015 General Government Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the Health Department in the amount of $1,885,807. Exempting the procurement of programming content for KPU IPTV services from competitive bidding with several companies, DirecTV, Sportsnet, Northwest LLC, National Cable Television Cooperative, Tower Distribution Company, and Viewiquity Incorporated. And the finalization of a sales agreement for surplus city-owned property with Greg Updike. It was deferred from December 3rd, 2015.
Any discussion?
I don't think Viewiquity is a word.
Katie, would you call the roll, please?
Zingy.
Yes.
Seereton.
Yes.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
And Kus.
All right, that brings us down to item 6A1, which is Resolution Number 152609, adopting the budget of the year 216 appropriated from the General Government Fund, the fiscal year 216 deferred from December 14th, 2015.
Yeah, Your Honor?
Yes.
I wondered if it wouldn't be more appropriate to deal with the other business before we deal with the two budget items. Get them out of the way, and then we can work on the two budgets.
With the pleasure of the council. Okay, let's go ahead and do that. I'll wait for Mayor Lou to get here so he can do his appointments to the boards and commissions. We'll bring us then into new business. And we have item 7A1. And that's ordinance number 151795, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code to increase the rates and fees to use the mortgage facility and harbor facilities and harbor master services in first reading. Motion, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the State Council approving first reading ordinance numbers 151795, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code Sections 144020 and 144030, 144035, 144040, and 144050, to increase rates and fees for the use of mortgage facilities, harbor facilities, harbor master services, and establish a effective date.
Second.
Been moving seconded. Dick.
No, I really don't have much to say. All of those really make sense, and it kind of helps keep the harbor in good condition and moving forward. I think the harbor board was okay with them.
We weren't?
Yeah.
The harbor board matched, and we were okay with them.
Thank you.
I think that's good.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Katie, would you call the roll, please?
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kus.
Yes.
Seereton.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us down to item 7A2, various government departmental budget transfers.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council authorize the City Manager to transfer $91,108 from various accounts, including $4250 from appropriated reserves of the General Fund and $19,258 from appropriated reserves of the Port Enterprise Fund, as outlined in the Finance Director's Report of December 7th, 2015.
Been moving seconded. Judy, you have anything?
Nope.
Dick.
Yeah, a private question for Bob. Two of those items deal with payout of retirement and unanticipated sick leave and so forth. Now, a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about money that's over here in another account for things that, maybe it's like that. So, is that part of that account? Does it come from there? Does it come out of the General Fund somewhere, or what?
The answer to your, short answer to your question is yes. It kind of alludes to what I talked about before, the way we budget for other benefits. We do not include in our calculation and estimate for employees that are going to retire from the city. And when they retire from the city, we will pay off a certain amount of sick leave that they haven't used. That portion is not budgeted for, and that's what this transfer is taking care of. We had a couple of employees that retired, and they received a sick leave payout upon retirement. And I'm proposing going forward in the future that we change the way we do our budgeting to take that into consideration so the money would be moved to the special fund that we're talking about, along with the regular vacation leave that is vested. And a portion of the sick leave that vested for employees that are under a different plan where they do get their balance of their sick leave paid out, even though they haven't actually retired from the city.
So, are you saying there really doesn't, no money exists in this account now, or?
For these employees, because they're getting their sick leave balance upon retirement. Generally, the policy is you get a portion of your sick leave when you leave city employment, but if you retire, you get up to 65 days, I believe. And that's the portion that we're not, we're not picking up. While we're picking up is what they get if they don't retire. Because we don't know if employees are going to retire from the city. But we're proposing to make a change whereby when an employee is eligible for retirement, we will go ahead and budget for it. Doesn't mean they're going to retire, it's just that they're eligible to retire from the city. But that's something that we're planning on doing next year. I'm sorry, I'm, by next year, I mean 2017.
Okay.
I know it's a little complicated, but since we didn't do that in 2015, I have to come back and ask for an adjustment, because right now we're showing the budget shortfall in that account.
Anybody else? Thank you, Bob. Hearing none. Katie, would you call the roll, please?
Seereton.
Yes.
Kus.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us to item 7A3, which is the conceptual design for contract number 15-14, Centennial Building Gallery Expansion and Restroom Renovation, Welsh Royal Architect
Your Honor, I move the City Council approve the floor plan B2 conceptual designs for expanded gallery space and renovated restrooms. The Centennial Building is developed by Welsh Royal Architects LLC under contract 15-14, Centennial Building Gallery Expansion and Restroom Renovation Design.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Dave, do you have anything?
Actually, I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure whether they're for the Museum Director, whether they're for the architect or not. Looking at the new design, I do have some questions.
Should we probably have Carl start off? And you want to set up anything on this, Carl, before we move into the discussion?
Just generally, Mr. Mayor, we brought a design back to the council in October. You determined that you wanted additional work done by staff and the advisory board to see if a consensus could be reached. Consensus was reached at the last meeting by a majority vote, as was pointed out by the speakers at the podium tonight. And I think we laid out pretty much what we needed to in our memorandum. And I'm sure that Lacy and Tim are here to answer questions. And if you want to hear from advisory board members, they're here as well.
Thank you. Okay, do you want to start off?
Sure. Looking at the design, and I do appreciate the fact that there were some changes made from the one we saw in October. Let's see if I can find it here. Hold on a second. This takes me a while. I guess two quick, two questions regarding the design.
We got some paperwork.
If I may.
Yep.
Have so much.
Well, we'll leave one for Lou.
First of all, I'm curious why the, given the fact, and this may have changed, but traditionally, it seems like in the summer, a large number of people would come to the facility that are looking for the bathrooms. I guess I'm curious why there's a somewhat Byzantine process of going through the entryway, around the flex exhibit, through the lobby, down past the ducks, and around the corner to find the bathrooms. I'm curious why, maybe you've got a real good reason for this, but why are you not accessing the bathrooms off the entryway?
That is intentional, and it's really to control the people entering the building just for the sole purpose of using the bathrooms and, you know.
But you are aware of the law to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the problems associated with that. I don't know if you want me to go into any detail, but you understand the issues staffing deals with.
I do like, it seems that for those who just want to go in and use the bathroom, they're going to have to go over, they're going to have to engage staff. Where are the bathrooms around, and that's going to add additional staff time and stuff, too.
Well, in some ways, yeah. I mean, it's more, I think, the eye contact, because I think if you're a local, you're allowed to use a museum, and there's not any, you don't have to give a password or anything like that. But you, I think there's that eye contact, like, okay, I understand you're going to use the bathroom. You know, if you're not out in half an hour, you know, we're going to have to check in on it and make sure you're not taking a bath.
I understand that part, but it just seems like it's, you know. The other thing is, and this kind of relates to the use of the program, program space, and how you would seal off this area. I'm not sure what specific evening program, programs you have planned there, evenings or not. But in a lot of other facilities, they have areas that are compartmentalized where you can sort of cut it off, and you wouldn't have to open up the whole building to have the bathrooms open with the program space. Obviously, here, you would.
Yeah.
So, that was intentional?
That was an element that was lost in the redesign, and it, to my understanding, was it really wasn't as important to the advisory board. We brought that up several times. It was more important for them to really, you know, have more expansion, more exhibit space.
Right.
So, one way to do that was really limit the entry size. And we had some stroller storage, and that wasn't very important to the Museum Advisory Board. So, we really tightened up a lot of that space and to give it back to exhibits. So, but we were aware that was a functionality that was going to be missing on this plan.
Where in the heck are we?
We're on Museum Design.
Your favorite topic.
Sonia Alvarez had requested to.
The flex exhibit. Sorry. Yeah, maybe you can explain that.
Sure.
Actually, I understand the one farther back against the, against the, the one kind of like right in the middle of the lobby.
Yeah, that initially was labeled as a large exhibit space, and the idea being that would be a, some, an exhibit, a large exhibit that would draw people in. You know, one idea, it could be that Fornell lens, the lighthouse lens that's currently in the window. Or it could be the Queen, the height, what's the?
Ketchikan Queen.
Ketchikan Queen, that scaled version of, yeah. Something that people could walk around, and it kind of needs a home. There's a lot of large objects that need homes, and that would be a good spot.
The goose wouldn't fit there?
The goose would fit, sorry.
All right. Judy.
I guess I have a question about the additional employee. So, under the previous drawings, were we asking for another employee with that one, too? I just don't remember. Maybe Lacy?
When we presented the original plan, at that time, no. The budget did not contain a recommendation for an additional position. My feeling was we needed to move ahead, and then we would evaluate once the new exhibit space was established. The advisory board requested significantly more museum space under the plan that's before you. This evening, the Museum Director brought the issue to my attention and basically indicated that with this type of additional space and the current staffing that we have, it was going to be difficult not only to maintain the additional exhibit space, but to establish that exhibit space. When the curator of exhibits was, position was eliminated in 2010, we roughly had 1,400 square feet of exhibit space for the museum. We're now going to 2,000 more square feet, so a total of 3,400 square feet. The staff right now has a difficult job in changing out exhibits, three, four exhibits a year. And they've had to take on that responsibility that was formerly the curator of exhibits, main, main focus. Now, you want to add roughly 2,000 additional square feet. I want to let Lacy come up to the podium and speak for herself. She's telling me that's going to be next to impossible to do it, do it right with the existing staff we have.
Thank you, Museum Director Lacy Simpson. Since the exhibit's curator position was eliminated in 2010, we've gained 46% more exhibit space by occupying an area that was formerly used as public library space for temporary exhibit space. The rate at which we rotate out exhibits with our current staffing, which does not include a single staff member that is solely dedicated to exhibits, it's incredibly demanding. It takes months to organize and install an exhibit, and it's not sustainable at the rate that we're going at now. If we're looking at additional 2,000 square feet of space, which would bump us up another 61% of exhibit space from where we are now, it's, it's really unrealistic that with our current staffing that we would be able to handle that sustainably and in a long-term fashion.
I just was, the 76,939, is that the total cost of that employee, or is that just the salary?
That is, that is the total cost. That's the loaded cost with insurance and benefits. That is the complete cost of having that position reinstated.
Dick.
Okay, I guess I'm puzzled. The floor plan that we were presenting, the first of October, which we sent back at 3,000 square feet, and 29, 22, it says. There was no mention of another staff. This time here, we're looking for 34, 21, which is about six figures. The numbers, why didn't we need a 10 if we needed? The numbers, why didn't we need it then if we needed now?
I will tell you, Councilmember Puce, the museum director brought it to my attention before this plan was submitted to you in its original form. When I developed the budget, at that point, I was not prepared to include that additional position. In further discussions with the museum director, and given the addition of the additional space, I felt compelled to bring the issue forward. And I probably didn't have as good an understanding as I should have when the original plan was brought to you in October. What Ms. Simpson is telling you is that thirty four hundred square feet, and even if we went back to the, what was originally presented in October, what you're gonna get out of spending a million dollars is space. You're not gonna get the exhibit for that investment. To get the exhibit and to maintain it and to be able to do the other things that the museum does by its very nature. She's telling me, and I'm telling you, we need the restoration of that position. As you'll recall, when the position was eliminated, Councilmember Olson made an argument that he still wanted it shown on the books, even if it wasn't filled, in anticipation of the museum at some point occupying the Centennial Building once the library moved out, and having the ability to do exhibits and doing them in a quality manner. What I'm hearing is that we can spend the money and get the space, but without the position, we're not gonna be able to do the quality exhibits.
Judy.
Well, I have to say that I came here with the attitude that I was gonna vote against that position. But, so thank you for that explanation, because it has changed my mind. I think that if we're gonna support the museum, we need to support the museum and give them all the tools to be successful. And so with that, I'm gonna vote for it.
Dick.
Yeah, a couple of other questions in on scheduling. Assuming we approve this tonight, it's in the budget, at what point in time would that space be available to be occupied?
We would start construction following the end of cruise ship season, and hopefully it will be available by the spring of two thousand seventeen.
So then, when do we need to have a person to start doing it? Not tomorrow, but maybe six, eight months?
In my opinion, you'd want that person to start in two thousand sixteen, not only to oversee the construction, but be able to start planning as to what's gonna go in that space once the construction is complete. I'll defer to Lacy.
No, I absolutely concur with City Manager Emelon. We would need that position as soon as possible to begin coordinating the effort for what the permanent exhibit would be like in this expanded space.
This person would be qualified to oversee this construction. We've got engineers that should be doing it.
No, they wouldn't, sorry. This person would not be overseeing construction, but they would be working with the contractors in terms of designing space, understanding what, you know, load capacities are for walls and those sorts of things. As Mr. Emelon said, this just gets us a shell, an empty space, and it would be the curator exhibit's job to design what would go in that space. They would be fabricating podiums, cabinetry, those sorts of things that would actually house exhibit artifacts.
Bob.
The present contract we have for expansion, that doesn't include building fixtures, right?
It does not.
For display. So, that's still another budget item that's gonna have to be taken up at some particular point in time, probably in the two sixteen budget. I would imagine you'd have better idea of maybe what you're gonna be.
Two thousand seventeen, that's.
Well, we'll deliberate it two sixteen, four two seven.
Correct.
So, when I look at this, it says permanent exhibit space. How permanent is permanent?
It's a very good question. It's a bit of a misnomer. Permanent exhibits usually have a lifespan of about ten years. But the items that go on display, they shouldn't live there indefinitely. It's harmful to objects to live there forever. They need to be rotated. We often have redundancy in our collection to replace those items so that the narrative isn't altered. But that item isn't being, you know, exposed to too much light or dust or those sorts of things. So, it's got about a ten-year lifespan, but things need to be changed out.
Anybody else?
We need old grownups back.
It's already there.
All right.
You know, in your office space there, does those windows have to be changed to be egress? No. And did we add sprinklers during this particular portion of construction?
That's a good question. The building official's not requiring it because we're not changing the use of the building. But it is on your budget, I think, in a year or two to do that. It's a good idea if the city can budget for that in the future.
So, in this particular remodel, is there anything that we should be careful of in regards to future planning of a sprinkler system?
You know, there's not really much we can do. It's gonna have to be exposed in the future. We're having very few drop ceilings in this plan, so I don't see any real way around that.
I believe it's probably our furnace system is, I mean, our water entry is probably somewhere is under the program space or entry space. I think it comes right in off of.
Under the entry, I think, yeah.
So, is there anything, I see we got like that program storage and stuff, you're gonna have to have a sprinkler tree come up through someplace.
Yeah, you know, a lot of that work would happen in the lower floor, because it'd probably have to be a new water line brought in larger diameter. And then, that's where the sprinkler tree would occur. But then, you're right, then it will have to come up somewhere. And we have some closets that I think somebody could do, maybe that program storage space where there's a chimney, that might be a good location for just the pipe to come up and then be distributed.
Yeah, and so that's what I was just thinking, as we're going through this, maybe we should keep that in mind, so we don't build something permanent in there and foul ourselves a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good point. I can actually, we are early in the stage. I can talk to the mechanical engineers and kind of make sure we're not doing something where we're gonna box ourselves in a corner. That's something I really hadn't been thinking too far advanced, but we can do that.
Thank you. Because we have to have a exterior drain test valve system also.
Yeah.
And so that would make some difference, too, of where you're gonna place it and how it's gonna come out of the building so it's accessible, because it's over the top of the moat, we can't get to it.
Right, yeah. Fire department, we would probably want that from the parking lot, upper parking lot, so maybe it's near where the book drop is now.
Yeah, something like that.
Did look at it.
Thank you.
Dick.
One person, Sonia wanted to.
Yeah, I was gonna call her next. Sonia, wanna come up? Sonia's one of our advisory board members, correct?
I am, thank you.
You bet.
So, this started, Museum Advisory Board throughout the summer, spent several months with the leadership of the staff on a mission statement with goals and core values and those sorts of ideas for implementation into a final design. During that time, staff met with the architects and prepared a plan that included two offices upstairs. We did not have a part in that decision until it was presented to us. So, we were just as surprised as council was when you saw that plan. And there are still some board members and from the comments of the last council meeting, there are council members who are, are, may, still be adamant that they do not want offices upstairs. But we listened to the staff, and how that happened was that one of their main concerns was security. And so, the initial plan had two offices upstairs on the far left of the plan. And they had, they were hidden. There was no visibility from them to the public space in the lobby or the entry or the public bathrooms, and that just didn't make sense. So, we negotiated to put Office One, which would be the reception administration office, next to and up front in the reception area. That made sense, because that is a security item. And we also decided on glass windows between that office and the reception area for security. So, that's how we changed from no offices to one office upstairs. Well, then, we got to the issue of two offices upstairs, and there was a lot of discussion and disagreement on that issue. Council and board members asked for a plan that would show us what no offices upstairs would look like, and we never got that. We also asked for a plan where the restrooms were in an east-west orientation instead of north-south. We never got that either. So, what we actually came up with in the final vote was limited in scope, because it really didn't reflect an initial open table with everyone's ideas out there. Now, what we finally, if you look at the plan, if you look at the plan itself, we learned during the process that one of the reasons staff was opposed to such an enlargement of exhibit space was because of staffing issues. And that also made a lot of sense. And then, we thought, well, if we can move two offices upstairs, that relieves space downstairs for additional storage and work area. So, some of us are still opposed to all of the blue area, the workshop area, the storage area. We don't have an elevator, but there is access around the building. It's not very far. We're all sort of used to inclement weather. So, some of us still don't like as much of the dark blue area as it is here. The, personally, my opinion on the blue area to the right, it's labeled exhibit prep tools, that's equipment storage, is too large. That space should not include that window on the creek. Part of our mission statement was that the creek be as visible to the public as possible, because the other window to the north end of temporary exhibit will be closed off. So, from that perspective of the creek, it's the only one of that perspective. You see the two dilapidated buildings at the end of Creek Street, which I understand are coming down. You also see the big salmon there, and you see another perspective. And of course, there's concerns about fading and light and temperature from that window. However, there's all kinds of architectural glass that can relieve that problem. Mrs. Stanton suggested a bench there so people can sit in view. And Mr. Slagle suggested perhaps things that don't fade, like a chainsaw and other things that reflect the social fabric of what Catchcan was and is. And so, those are alternative ideas to making that window accessible, and it would be additional square footage to exhibit area. However, there is a little bit of deception here in the final number of the square footage of exhibit at thirty four hundred and twenty one feet. That includes three hundred and eleven feet of the monumental exhibit space, which is primarily permanent space. They're talking about the Catchcan Queen or the lighthouse. That really doesn't factor into temporary exhibit space or long-term exhibit space. It's more like permanent. And that could be changed out, but it might be left there for years. So, that number of thirty four twenty one should be reduced by the square footage of those two spaces, which is three hundred and eleven feet. We did get a family bathroom in there, because we asked architects, can we have it if you can do it? And they found a way to do that. Some of us were opposed to that in the beginning, but in the final vote, we got worked in and we were fine with that. The offices, we ended up with two upstairs. As I said, we never got to see plans that had no offices and one office upstairs. But it was explained to us by staff that these two positions, quote, were joined at the hip and had to be, have immediate access to each other. The number of square footage on the plan should be increased by the file storage. That is not calculated into the offices. But that is, you know, admin space. The public area, the program space, the sink area was provided as a place for some of the workshops, like basket weaving, that might want to wet their cedar or paintbrushes. And the staff decided that they could have their break room downstairs. But as to the workshop area upstairs, once staff, they've been unable to designate certain areas for certain types of storage and workshops downstairs, because everything's been sort of unknown until now, and they've hesitated to put time or money into permanent places for things. And so, things are disorganized, but I think that's going to happen. And so, I think there's going to be room downstairs for the workshop area here on this plan designated on the right corner. That if you clear that window, it will fit in with the mission statement. It will provide public view of that perspective to the creek. The space will be accommodated on the lower floor. I also wanted to share with you the worksheet that I created, and we used it at two meetings to go over, to go over all the amenities, spaces that a museum might have, including a coffee shop. We said no to that. But it divides the spaces into upper or lower. So, we went through that item by item. We also decided that a lot of the spaces would not be micromanaged by the advisory board, that it was up to the staff to determine where they wanted storage or some of those items that are behind the scenes. But all of the board members really believe that the mission of the council and the board itself is to provide as much exhibit space as possible. That still remains the bottom line here, because there are so many people in the community who have donated items over the years, and those items are just not going to be displayed. Perhaps there needs to not be as many temporary exhibits, three or four a year. It is overwhelming for the staff, and this staff is very hardworking. And they're very talented, and they're passionate about their work. And while saying that, the letter from Terry Wanzar, our chair, that we did discuss at length about supporting the staff and getting that initial position restored, but it was not a vote. It was a discussion that when that time comes, we would look to support that, to support what staff needs and what they want. So, it's important to me that council knows that this isn't by any means a unanimous, or that there is no disagreement on usages and square footages and locations of spaces either on the main or the lower floor. But it is, I think we were funneled into this plan, but I think it's going to be okay. And what I'm very concerned about is that the council not see that exhibit space should not be expanded without having an additional staff. We're talking about today and the current staff. We need to look to the future, many years down the road, with the different councils, of different staff, who may be able to handle a larger exhibit space once it has been established. For example, the Juno Museum's curator is in charge of the exhibits and the collections. But of course, that person probably walked into the job where those exhibits were already in place. This is not the case here. So, maybe after that person does their job, maybe that position goes away in another budget situation. But, you know, it is a shame that that position is open and there and needed, and we don't have it. So, we do support that, but we didn't make that decision through a vote. And it would be, you know, we don't want, I don't want the council to think that we can't have one without the other. We want the exhibit space to be as large as possible. That's what the community wants. Actually, I know two people who are not donating their personal items. People have lived here a long time, because they don't feel they'll ever be exposed to the public. And that's pretty sad. They're sending them to the Juno Museum. That's our history in another place. That's why we need the space for the long term, the big picture. It's beyond the staff, it's beyond this board, it's beyond this council. And so, we need to look at the big picture, maximize that space, leave the details to the staff, support them with this additional position, and just continue to go forward. We thank you for all the patience you've had with us. It really means a lot to us. But it's very clear that we have the support of the council, certainly have the support of the museum board, which is one of the finest boards I've ever worked with, and very capable and passionate staff as well.
Any questions for Sonia? Thank you very much, Sonia.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, a couple more questions, and I think Sonia legitimately pointed out that window over there on the right-hand side, whether it should be blocked in with storage or whether it should be so that it could be seen out of or used. Something to think about. The other one is I know part of this is the staff being able to see what's going on. And I'm kind of wondering if the reception area can actually be, is there enough viewing there going back into the permanent space going on the map on the proposed up to the upside? Or should that administrative secretary, there's a real narrow two-foot section in there in purple, maybe that purple needs to disappear, and there needs to be a window on the end of that administrative secretary thing so that she or he can see that place if needed. So it's something I think that the architect ought to look at. Otherwise, I think this looks good. I mean, it did a lot, it's a lot better than what I thought it was before.
Bob?
Yeah, maybe. Tim, could you explain why the exhibit prep tool equipment area had the wall extended to where the doors are past the window rather than on the other side? I see that there's a janitor area there, but it's not boxed in by any wall.
You know, it's really based on the square footage that staff needs to build the exhibits for the temporary exhibit. And, you know, we intentionally are trying not to get any direct light into any of the exhibit areas. There, you'll notice the, like, the permanent exhibit, there's kind of a squiggly, you know, wall, and that's to deflect the light. But yeah, for the exhibit prep, that was intentional because there's a certain amount of space that she needs, and it's less than that person's using now. They've made some compromises from their earlier plan in October.
Okay, and are these just, I imagine you're going to use metal stud frame walls inside?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
And just sheet rocked over or whatever they can do?
Yeah, there may be some plywood in between just for fastening.
For fastening stuff. And I know that Dick was talking about putting a window in that one area, but I know that wall space is a premium in museums for a lot of artwork and different things that may even be.
And I could speak to your questions if that's okay. That little, I guess, that two- or three-foot wide space, that was intentional for mounting. Some of the objects that the staff puts on the walls are large, like currently have a couple some totem poles in the temporary exhibit, and they'll get behind the wall and fasten them, so we wanted to give them some opportunities there. And really, the reception desk was kind of limited to that size just for trying to keep a lid on the budget, but if we can, we would extend that so you could easily kind of keep an eye on the permanent exhibit.
Yes, Dick?
So then, there's a technical reason for not letting that window on that side, looking at the map, let the light in?
Yeah, currently, that window is blocked. There's a, and it's, we're allowing kind of in the corner of the, the knee part of the building, right? Those windows are all open, and there's a great view of the creek there, and actually a better view, actually, I spoke at the end, like in the former library reading space. So we felt like, as designers, that there were ample opportunities to view the creek, and we just really didn't want to, I guess, neck down the exhibit prep anymore.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, Dave?
Yes, sorry, Tim. One further question on compartmentalization. What about the possibility of putting some sort of security gate on this side of the, up in this area to cut, because the whole, still having that whole area open?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, you know, that's a good point. Lacey actually brought that up at our last meeting. We don't have that in the budget now, but there may be, you know, $6,000 or something for one that size. So that would be one way to allow, because we have the current security gate.
Over here.
Yeah, that gets remained, and then we could put one there if the budget allows, and that would allow the lobby to be open after hours.
Bob?
Tim, in the entryway here, we've got the double doors, and then you have the side lights. Are those removable so you can get a large object into the building?
Normally, they are. Are you talking about the existing exterior doors?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, you could take that apart, but it'd be a pretty big job. You'd have to get, you know, a contractor.
Well, I'm sure there's going to be large items that will have to be moved into this. They may be large items without a lot of weight, but is there a way that we can consider how we're going to get those in there? I know that when we got a whole bunch of stuff into the Totem Heritage Center, it was a task. And they had a skylight, of course, that we opened up and dropped a lot of stuff down through. And then with the offset doorway, it's going around a corner, so when you have longer objects, you may even be hindered more. And so I'm concerned about, and I don't know how big all these objects are going to be, but I'm a little bit concerned that we're going to be bottlenecking ourselves if we don't maybe think about that a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, you know, we weren't planning to change those front doors. We were going to change the glass so it wasn't dark glass anymore, just to make it transparent. But I don't know if that's a question that, if you have, like, above objects, if that's a concern, because right now the doors are, you know, have a six-foot opening, but if there's a bit of concern about needing more width?
Sure. I don't think we would need more width for the doors, but I do recognize Councilmember Seerison's concern about bottleneck and having to go around a corner.
Especially with the flux.
Yeah, and that's a really legitimate concern. At present, we can move large objects in and out of the building because it's literally a straight shot in and out of the lobby, and this would, you'd have to work around that, you know, flexible exhibit, large object display that's in the center of the gallery. There is, of course, the possibility, if it's allowable, putting on the object, if it can be broken down in some way to move it in and out. We try not to do that sort of thing, but if that's the situation that we're presented with, we might have to do that if we're moving large objects in and out.
Well, maybe those glazings in the front could be removable somehow.
That's, yeah, that's worth exploring.
Yeah. Pinned issue or something, I don't know what. Since they're not needing to be weatherproof, and I don't know if there's any other ratings that we have to worry about, but I think that if there's a way that we can bifurcals out of the way or just remove them out of the way, it's going to be better access. Thank you.
So Carl, question for me. So on this new plan, we're looking at adding another person. If we went back to the old plan, then we wouldn't be looking at adding another person.
We talked about that a little before you arrived this evening, Mr. Mayor, and what I told the council was when the original plan was presented, an additional position was not included in the budget. The museum director had sent a memo to me outlining her concerns at that time. I probably did not appreciate it as much as I, as well as I should have at the time. After the advisory board came to their consensus, Lacey and I talked about it again, and she has convinced me that, and the advisory board has convinced me that that curator of exhibits position really does need to be restored if we're going to do this and do it right. What you have before you tonight gets you space. It does not get you the exhibits. And just to get the exhibits established, it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to do that with the existing staff we have.
Even with Plan B of October 1?
I'll defer to the museum director.
So Plan B did have an increase in exhibit space. It would increase our exhibit space thirty-seven percent from what it is now. Staff was sort of willing to swallow that bitter pill a little bit just to move forward with the building, but recognizing without additional staff, that doesn't really present a long-term solution for how we're going to deal with that much expanded exhibit space. We do need to look to not just how we're getting a permanent exhibit in this new space, but how we're going to maintain that permanent exhibit, how we're going to change out temporary exhibits. And it's absolutely critical that we have that curator exhibits position reinstated.
You think for both of them?
I do think for both of them.
I hate to add a position, so I hate to be such a negative, but I'd rather see us do Plan B and see what we can do without the position. Maybe I can volunteer. And, but I'm sorry I missed part of the discussion. And does anybody have anything else before we vote on the motion that's on the table? Carl, Dave?
No. Just wanted, do I like having two offices upstairs? No. Do I like the exhibit prep space? Not as much. That said, as has been mentioned by several people at the podium tonight, this is somewhat of, you know, I'm not sure everyone's getting exactly what they want here, but I think everyone's getting enough of what they need to make a go of it. And while I'm also, you know, loathe to add people, to a certain extent, we're replacing a position that was there for many, many years prior to that. Anyone who's spent any time around museums I have over the years knows when exhibit goes up, pretty much work on everything else stops, and that's with the exhibit person there. I can't imagine how they would actually be able to fill up all this wonderful space we're giving them with the existing staff and do as good a job of it as we expect them to, so.
Bob, did you have something else?
So we have, the motion we're voting on right now, as it's made, is just for the renovation. There's another motion that would have to be, and it's, I think it's on books here, so just for clarification.
It's under the budget updates.
Okay, yeah, that's with the budget updates, okay.
Call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kous?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Seerison?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Hey, that passes five to nothing. All right, so does that bring us down to offer employment?
Yes.
Okay. That's number four. We have a motion?
What page is that on, though?
Page one twelve, I think it is.
Page one twelve of two ninety-four. Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council authorize the city manager to offer the position of controller to Michelle Johansson of Ketchikan, Alaska, based upon a compensation level of grade seven-seven-two-step-oh at an annual salary of ninety-four thousand, three hundred and six dollars effective October one, two thousand and fifteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Carlos is part of our reorganization, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have any questions?
Did I read the wrong one?
You're good. You got the right one.
Oh, it's in here.
Call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
Seerison?
I'm going to abstain. My wife works in that department.
I don't think it would.
You don't think so?
Nope.
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to nothing. That brings down to seven-B one, two-point coordination change order. BAM Construction, do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council approve change order number one in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents to contract number fifteen to twenty-one two-point formation facility between the Ketchikan Public Utilities and BAM LLC. Approve funding from the water division, UV, and coronation and water treatment plant improvement to capital account, and direct the general manager to execute the change order on behalf of the City Council.
Councilmember Seerison, there was a revised motion.
Oh, excuse me. What's the change in it?
The funding source.
Oh, just tell us what the different funding sources, Bob, instead of rereading.
There was a revision laid on here.
Contract contingency.
What's that?
The funding source of contract contingency.
Okay.
We're changing the contract contingency.
Okay. Contract contingency, establishing contract number fifteen twenty-one, direct the city to general manager to execute the change order on behalf of the City Council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's on the table. Anything, Bob?
No. I think it's pretty self-explanatory in the explanation that we were given.
Anybody else?
I got one question.
You bet.
In regards to this, how late was Dawson's delivery on?
They weren't technically late. They were within the contractual time period.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seerison?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
All right, that passed five to nothing. That brings us down to seven-B two. Budget transfer for various Ketchikan public utility divisions. We have a motion? Andy, you're stuck.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council authorize the general manager to transfer five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars from various accounts to KPU as outlined in the finance director's report of December seventh, two fifteen.
A second?
Second.
Lou did second it. Anybody want to say anything?
Yeah, Lou.
You bet, Dick.
I know we kind of went through some of this because of overtime and positions being vacant and so forth, but I'm still having a real tough time getting my mind around the number, the amount of money left over in salaries and et cetera, where this, most of this is coming from. Whenever I look at the vacancy rates and the positions that were vacant in telecom, and it only amounts to about fourteen months, and we're looking at three-hundred thousand dollars, and I don't know how to figure it out. So just don't get me wrong, it just don't, numbers don't add up to. That's all the ones that are being transferred from salaries and, I guess, benefits to cover overtime and to cover, oh, what is it, unanticipated materials for repairs and so forth. Well, that one there got me a little fuzzy too, but can't get a handle on it. The other one is I need somebody to explain what the unanticipated cost for building and grounds made in this were for seven, I don't know, it's about thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Bob, you got an answer?
I think Ed.
Anybody?
Mr. Cushing, do you want, oh, I'm sorry. Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KPU Telecommunications. The, if I understood your question correctly, Councilman, you were addressing the janitorial and cleaning services and unanticipated costs for building and maintenance services?
That's one of them that I think it probably got an easier answer than the other one, which is totaled up to thirty-seven thousand dollars. Did the contract go up to whatever? What happened to increase the cost at thirty-seven thousand?
Sure. The primary griber was, on the janitorial side, was, I've been at a telecom now for three or four years, and we historically have suffered from the world's most awful janitorial services. We get a janitorial contractor, and they do a lousy job. We get another one, they do a lousy job. So we end up using staff to clean up after the janitors instead of the janitors cleaning up after the staff. This year, we finally found a quality janitorial firm, but their price for doing a quality job exceeded our budget. So that's the cost of keeping the building clean on a consistently reliable basis.
Any other questions? Dick?
Well, like I say, I don't know how to get an answer from the standpoint of, the reason being we've got a lot of extra money in salaries and wages and benefits is vacancies and the numbers that were provided to us back in November adds up to fourteen months of vacancies in telecom, and that doesn't add up to three-hundred thousand dollars. That's all I'm saying, so I'm going to let the manager and you guys figure it out what's going on there. I just, the numbers don't balance for me on both sides. So.
Well, I don't have all those numbers in front of me tonight. I do know that as of today, we now have two vacant positions at telecom. As of a week ago, we had three vacant positions at telecom. Three of those positions have been vacant for several months now. We have been successful in hiring two additional people. One started today. One starts in two weeks. We've had, suffered from vacancies throughout the summer. I don't have the fourteen months information sitting in front of me, but.
Yeah, as I say, Ed, all I, what I'm doing, I'm going by what I have here, and I've got one position vacant for four months from January to through April, and then I've got two positions that have been vacant for, it looks like, five months, and that's probably part of what you're still vacant right now. That only adds, that doesn't add up to enough unless those guys are making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and I don't think they are. It just, the numbers just don't come back and forth to me. I'm sorry, but they don't.
Actually, you probably hit the nail right on the head. They probably are making close to a hundred and fifty thousand, because you have to factor in benefit costs as well. Benefit costs run to about fifty percent. Benefit costs run to about fifty percent, so if you got somebody that's making eighty thousand dollars, fifty percent benefit, then that's a hundred and twenty thousand per person.
Yeah, but in support of that, you'll, if you dig into those transfer requests, a good bit of that money is coming out of the benefits portion of the salaries budget. It's not just all coming out of straight wages. Councilmember Kous, we'll, we'll take a look at it and try to get the numbers to correlate for you.
Bob? Uh, yeah, this is just for, uh, Bob, when you look at salaries and wages, you take the contract, or the budgeted FTEs and their, you use a salary range or actually what they make?
We use actually what they make.
Okay.
Uh, in the case of the journeyman rate, that's pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
In the case of employees that are in the compensation plan with staff, we try to anticipate where they're going to be, their grade and staff based on, you know, assuming that they're going to get a successful evaluation, but it's based on exactly what that person is projected to be making in twenty sixteen plus the actual benefit cost. So yes, it's, uh, it's the real number.
Yeah, and there, there's no contingency or, or something on top of that? That's just exactly what we, we budget.
Exactly what it is, and, and yeah, if, uh, we do it for each employee that works for the city of Ketchikan.
Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kous?
Okay.
Harris, oop, sorry, Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes five to nothing, that brings us down to seven B three, offer employment syst, electric system manager slash engineer. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the general manager to offer the position of electrical systems manager and engineer to Daniel Roberts of Anchorage, Alaska, based upon the compensation level of grade seven, seven, three-step S at an annual salary of a hundred and two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five, and a vacation accrual of twenty days per year.
Second, please.
Second.
Lou didn't second it. Bob, you want to add anything?
Um, yeah, I, when, when we normally hire a physician, uh, that we're not, I guess, negotiated on, Bob, they start out with, what is it, uh, ten days? What, what's the vacation accrual rate now for the utility contract? Oh, Marie, Marie probably has it. I saw you hiding it there.
It's twelve days a year.
Twelve days a year?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, that's where they start.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Kous?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes five to nothing, that takes us back up to, uh, everything's done but the budgets?
A, a question.
You bet, Dick.
Was the position for the museum in the budget part?
It's here.
Yes.
It's over the budget part.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, can we back the budgets?
We are.
All right, let's take a three-minute break so I can get organized.
Three minutes? Three minutes?
Three minutes, yeah.
Um, Bob told me that we haven't done the appointments.
That's right, that's up there.
And, um, do we have any exceptions on the appointments at Library Board and the Historic Commission? Hearing done, they are officially appointed. That brings us back to the budget. We'll start with the, um, general government budget.
And period updates.
And that's my next question, Madam Clerk, which?
Number twenty-six.
Okay.
Twenty-nine and thirty-nine.
I found twenty-nine, oh, thirty-nine. I'm going.
Twenty-six and twenty-nine are the ones that are.
Oh, in here.
Twenty-nine. Anyway, you could screw it up, I think.
Oh, twenty-six, okay. Do we have a motion for, um, budget update twenty-six? General Government operating capital budget update, museum creator position?
Oh, yeah.
It's in the packet.
Yes, yeah.
On your iPad.
Yeah.
Oh.
Hit the iPad thing and just scroll up a page or two and it's there.
Hit a page or two and it's there.
I gotta find it, here we go.
That's why I like these things, they just help me to find things.
I got it.
Jeez. You break it, you bought it.
Say it.
I think it's, um, I think it's page eighty-three, seven A three, but it's, I think.
What page do you have there, Lou?
It's the second page from, when you hit, hit the six A one, hit that, and it's the second, it's the one page after that.
Six A one, got it.
Okay, then scroll up one page.
Yes, down.
Down, up.
Down.
Me and my wife fight about which way's up and down all the time.
Is it page eighty-three?
Okay.
I, mine is different.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council amend the two sixteen museum budget by increasing the personnel services benefits by seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine, and the number of FTEs from seven point two zero to eight point two zero.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Lou didn't second it. Do you guys want to talk about it some more or not?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't think they can get that filled that quick, so I would move, we could reduce it by six months.
We got a amendment made, do we have a second for it?
I'll second.
Lou didn't second it. Dick?
I, I just, I mean, it'll take it, take you that long to fill it, and then the contract going out, I think that still gives them more than adequate amount of time.
Okay.
So if they, oops, sorry. Um, if they start advertising it now, it might take them that long to fill in anyway, right? That's what you're saying.
Correct, that's what he's saying.
So what would that make the starting date?
July one.
July one, then, yeah.
Okay. All right, if this passes, it passes the whole motion. Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kous?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yeah.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, passes four to one. That substituted for the main motion. All right, what was the other number, Madam Clerk, other than thirty-nine?
Well, twenty-nine.
Okay, twenty-nine's just a couple pages down from there. And that's the, um, additional funding for exhibit gallery expansion. Hmm? Is that the correct one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So is this, is this in the, tonight's packet?
Yeah. Your Honor?
Yes.
And, and Dick, it's on, uh, page fifty.
Oh, page fifty.
Yeah. I move the City Council amend the two sixteen museum budget by increasing the Centennial Building Exhibit Gallery Expansion and Capital Improvement Project by twenty-five thousand from four hundred thousand to four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Second.
Move it in second, and Bob, you want to say anything?
Nope, it's pretty self-explanatory, and I'm glad they came to a consensus on it, and we can move forward.
All right, call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kous?
Yeah.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to nothing, that brings us to number thirty-nine. Budget operating capital budget update number thirty-nine, carryover of two thousand and fifteen capital projects. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council amend the two sixteen general government operating capital budget by approving the carryover of forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine of uncompleted capital project programs for two fifteen and two sixteen, and the reduction of carryovers totaling twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five for the two fifteen capital projects that were previously carried over from two sixteen as outlined in the tat schedule.
Okay.
Move it in second. Anybody want to talk about anything?
Um. No, I think they're all pretty self-explanatory in what we're doing.
Okay, call the roll.
Um, I guess, um, one of the carryovers, is that for the dredging project in? Steve, is that one of the ones above Harbor?
North end.
And, um, is anything, I mean, the dredging is difficult as, as it is, is there any, uh, any upland development we're going to do so we can get in there and help ourselves out from time to time or something? I know we went down on that bank one time and did some stuff, didn't we?
Port and Harbors Director, Steve Corpron. We're in design right now, we plan to go to bid in about a month so that they can work these on the, uh, April minus tides.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, maybe, maybe the March tide depends on who gets it, uh, but we fully expect a couple of the contractors that are going to bid on it will probably want to go down the bank, which should be fine.
Okay.
So, and that should keep the cost to a minimum.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, call the roll.
Kous?
Yeah.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
All right, um, that's all the updates, we're back to the whole budget. Do we have anything else anybody wants to address in the general government budget? I do not have any.
We can do this one, that's right.
Yep. Dick?
Yeah, I, I know, uh, I've been chasing this for fifty years, but it's, it's back to the, uh, port security item, and, uh, there's about a half a million dollars in that particular line item. And still, the comments that I get from the public, it's the people that are wandering around down there in the summer. And I'm going to make a motion, and we'll see where this goes. But, uh, I move that staff bring council back an RFP for port security and crossing guards, as it is right now, and that RFP would also include, um, the contractor would have to have an approved security plan with the Coast Guard, so that we're kosher with them. And if we like the RFP or we want to try it, I know there's at least one outfit that might be interested in looking at it, because they want how it's written up, but I think we can save some money.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion. Um, have we done this before? Have we ever put it out for an RFP or anything like that?
No, we have not.
Bob?
Steve, are any of the ports in Alaska doing contract services for port security?
Port and Harbors Director, Steve Corpron. I think Anchorage has contract security, but it's at a much higher level than we are, and, and it's, it's not much for cruise ships, it's for all the, the container ships and row rows. Man, I can look into it, but, um, the security plan is not the responsibility of the contractor, it's the responsibility of the, the facility owner. So we have the responsibility for the security plan, so, um, whoever is providing the security has to follow that security plan.
Dick?
Just one comment, I know that Stephen Dorrain is providing security for at least two docks in Southeast. And I know, as much as I respect what we've done with Coast Guard, we have negotiated with them, to me, an extremely overstapped security plan if you listen to what is on, going on in the other Southeast communities. So maybe we need to relook at the security plan.
I'd like to comment on that, please.
You bet.
The, uh, as I mentioned at the last budget meeting when I was up here, the security plan has a certain level, especially on berth one and two, we have more people usually in place than the security plan requires due to safety and ambassador relationships and picking up litter, dog feces, things like that. So, uh, if you think the contractor is going to remove a bunch of people, uh, I think you're, you're wishing up the wrong well. I mean, it's, it, uh, it's, it's not going to make for a safer environment, I can, I can tell you that. Because right now, uh, let's say Stephen Dorrain or, or Cruise Line took over and ran the contract, uh, they won't provide safety zones around their own equipment. Why people do that?
Why wouldn't they?
They don't do it. We are constantly on them to maintain a safe area, and we're the ones policing them. They are not going to police themselves, I can guarantee it.
Okay, we have the idea on the table. Any other questions, Bob?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't mind looking at this, I, I don't know how the motion works in regards to, uh, that, I mean, I don't know, just four hands to at least look at the concept. I know that even state government right now is looking at contract services for all kinds of different things, in attempt to save money. I'm not sure that that gains efficiency, but, uh, I think it's certainly something that everybody's looking at. And I, I don't know how this RFP would, or this, I think I'd like to blueprint of what this RFP may look like, because I don't, I don't know, I don't know what it'll look like in regard to.
I, I guess at this point, rather than voting for the RFP, I'd rather, I'd rather see a report back from staff specifics on what do the other ports do? You know, are there other ports doing this? If not, then are there, and, and what this would look like? I guess I'd like to have more information. Because, yeah, I agree, we should look at it, I'm not, and, and we may, and decide it's not the way to go. But I'd like to have, like, to have information.
Bob?
Yeah, I think, uh, one of the processes, they just put out a letter of interest. If there's anybody out here that's actually interested, the, the problem is Steve would have to craft a little bit of history of what we've done, what the deliverables would have to be, uh, and the criteria that they have to meet. And then of course the letter of interest would, would explain how they meet that.
Carl, I understand what the council's trying to give, what you could do for us.
I understand the intent, Mr. Mayor, um. I can tell you from personal experience, a private contractor will not be as responsive as city staff is to concerns that will come up, um, relative to port security and the pedestrian crossing guards in the downtown area. Not this specific issue, but other, other issues related to services that take place on those vessels that generate citizens' complaints that we have no control over, and we will lodge those complaints to the appropriate companies that support those vessels, and we get very little response. So if you want to go down this road, do it with open eyes that if you ultimately hire a private contractor, it's my judgment that that contractor will not be as responsive to the citizen complaints that you may or may not get in terms of how port security and pedestrian safety issues are handled in the downtown core. That's, that's the one benefit you, you do get out of it. You have control over me, in turn have control over the Port and Harbors Director, and then have control over the people doing the port security and, uh, pedestrian traffic safety.
Bob?
Yeah, I don't disagree with what Carl says, I've been looking at some of this typical type of language in the state of Alaska. And the problem we have is if there is an issue on the port for whatever reason, if they're city employees, we can respond to it almost immediately. If it's contract services, you have to deal with the contract to get there. And if you're adding services, you have to negotiate the cost for that service, because the contractor isn't going to do it out of the goodness of his heart. And if there are items of complaints from either citizens or cruise industries, again, the process of working with a contractor could be much more difficult than today. And I think we have to value at some point services that we provide. And a lot of it would be just, you know, giving a guy a direction or helping this guy with that or something. It's not always just the hands-on moving pylons and corralling people and doing that kind of stuff. So I, I understand we're, we're staffed with that with this. But it is a costly item, there are, there've always been, I've heard a number of times that there's been about the numbers, how many, all this kind of stuff, we got a large area to cover. Then there have been requests for us to cover more, such as the contract. But you couldn't add those things on a contract very easily.
That's exactly right, and a lot of it is customer service. And I can write in the port security. And I can write in the port security requirements on it, but I, it's very tough to write in that someone has to be, be polite and answer questions when people ask them where Creek Street is, or where the, where, where the nearest mail drop is.
Yeah, but let's see where we're at. Um, let's, go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, I, and I'm, I'm not knocking, the guys down around the docks, they do a pretty good job, and, and most of them are really receptive, where you talk to them. It just is the public perception in mind, too, is there's too many of them. And we've talked about it before, and they butt up, and if you need any proof of it, I've got the port operations manager and five or six of them sitting right over here for several, more than several minutes at a time, and they, they weren't working. But anyway, um, we've gotta do something better than what we're doing with the ones we got, or see if we can't reduce the number of them so they don't punch up as bad as they are, and we, I think, if we can work on that, and if we can get a report back that says, like, think like Mr. Kuyper said, what are the other ports doing in Southeast? Maybe that will let us chew on it for a while.
Um, so do we want to vote on this motion, or have them go get us some more information?
We'll get some more.
More information, darling.
One thing, you want to withdraw the motion, please?
Oh, yeah.
The second?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Bob?
What's the average age of our employees?
Average is probably in the thirties, because we employ probably about two-thirds, uh, college kids, and about one-third, fifty to sixty-fives or so.
I know that.
And it, it's a good balance. One thing that people don't realize, um, I don't know the exact numbers, but we are probably the busiest cruise ship facility in North America. Now, you might say, wait, Juneau gets more ships, more people. They do. They have two public docks and two private docks. We've, we, our facility includes all four. In Seattle, they're broken up into separate docks. In Miami, there are separate docks, and that. We have four Panamax cruise ship berths that we are responsible for that are loaded five months of the year. So, maybe it's a half million dollars. That's not very much for the busiest, I think, cruise ship terminal in North America. And public perception also is incorrect. A lot of people that say, oh, there's too many people down there, wasting tax money. This is being funded by the cruise ship passengers and the ships. None of the local tax money is going into this. They're the ones paying for this. They're the ones we're, we're trying to, to help improve our customer service and safety for. So, those are my thoughts.
Okay, well, we pulled the motion, so we're going to ask, um, staff to look at what the other, um, ports in the Southeast, and probably Anchorage, too, and get back to us on that, and we'll go from there. Sound good? All right. Anything else on the general government side of the budget? You don't have anything, we can close that one up and move to the next.
Mr. Mayor, if you can close it up, then we'll require a vote on the budget.
No, we're just, we're just gonna leave it open.
It's a living organism.
Exactly. You want it to breathe.
The motion's on the floor.
Yeah, we already gave it. You want it to scream out here.
Okay. All right, let's, um, vote on the main motion of the two thousand sixteen general government budget. Call or roll, please.
Seiverton?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kus?
Okay.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that budget has passed for another season, five to nothing. That brings us down to six B one, and that is the KPU budget. It is now on the floor. The main motion has, like, it hasn't been made. Any, um, more comments or changes? I guess changes. We do have a budget update, which number?
Thirteen.
What was it?
Sixteen.
Thirteen, and here's a substitute. You want the one that starts?
Yeah, I got the substitute, yes.
Oh, great.
I move the City Council amend the two sixteen Ketchikan Public Utilities Operating Capital Budget by approving five thousand dollar reduction of carryover from the two fifteen Ward Cove Substation expansion capital project and the previously carried over to two sixteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We didn't second it. Bob?
Yeah, this was just cleanup. I noticed that there was a motion for the carryover, and in the budget we had fifty thousand, so the numbers just didn't match at all. So, they just, uh, the carryover is forty-five thousand, so the reduction was warranted.
Call the roll.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Harris? Oops, sorry. Seiverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to nothing. Um, anything else we want to address in the budget?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
On the two fourteen meeting, there was, um, a discussion in regards to budget update number nine. And that was in regards to, um, the cameras, um, as, as we discussed, for monitoring off of the port facility. And we talked about the mobotic cameras, um, and this is, this is, this is an item that was put out, I believe, by Ports and Harbors. And there was, uh, at that meeting, um, we were, we were, uh, as we discussed it, uh, Mr. Cushing told us to the best of his knowledge that no one in Ketchikan is actively in this space. And so they were talking about installing these advanced mobotic cameras. Well, there is a contractor in town that has actually installed a number of them, uh, in the school, gastric, uh, airport, and stuff like that. They are, um, factory-trained and certified, and they are a partnered dealer for mobotic cameras. So, um, I would like to, uh, we've had this ongoing discussion about security cameras and whether or not our, uh, telephone utilities should get into it. I know we talked about home stuff, and then we have maybe some of these other things. But, you know, I don't think that we need to send our guys out to train for this, these cameras. And the reason why is there's a lot of things we do in engineering, like seismographic stuff, and we hire a contractor to do that. There's, there's, there's certain specialties, uh, in, in all these fields, and rather than have to, I mean, the building maintenance, we don't, we don't send a guy out to, um, become a sheet metal guy or something like that. So, if there's a contractor presently working within the community that can provide some of these specialty services, and, you know, the, the closed system that we really have here in, in Ketchikan, I would soon support those, um, when available, I guess is what my thing is. So, I would like to take the, the camera, and, and I know that it's a difficult position, because we're, as a, we own a utilities that, that can potentially get into this business, um, and provide services, and, and maybe at some point we're, we may be thought of hampering that, but I just think that we do have a little bit of obligation to some of the businesses that are here working hard to provide services within the community, and especially with these small projects. I'd like to pull this off the, the, the utilities portion of the budget and, and push it back. I think, was there a proposal from Advanced Communications, Steve?
The Port and Harbor's Director, Steve Corperon, are you talking about the, the CIP budget for the Port and Harbor cameras, or are you talking about something in their budget?
Well, there was, the, the discussion was had at that meeting, um, in regards to the camera project. And where KPU, um, even in their, in their travel and training, has said they wanna send somebody out to be trained to work on these mobotic cameras. If we have a contractor in town, I don't know if that's particularly necessary.
May I speak to that on a short word?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Carl.
If, if the intent is to procure the cameras from a local contractor, we can, we can certainly do that. That really isn't the issue relative to the utilities' involvement. Utilities' involvement has more to do with how the data from those cameras is transmitted back to, to the city. And the fact that, in the case of the port, and in the case of select other departments where this may become an issue, there's gonna be an issue of a pole attachment. And I'm not comfortable at all with letting local firms who aren't schooled in attaching to our utility poles have access to our utility poles. That's where the utility comes in. We let a private contractor start going up those poles, we're gonna incur a huge liability, right? And I don't think that's very wise. If you want us to procure the cameras from a local supplier, we certainly can do that. But the data transmission and how those cameras are maintained when they're attached to our poles, that, that's a different issue, and I'll, I'll defer to.
If I may, this is not a new business for us. KPU Telecom has been providing the service for police and ports and harbors for eleven years. To best of my knowledge, far in advance of any other local contractor getting into the business, the only security-type cameras we provide for anyone in the community is for general government. In fact, we routinely refer local businesses and other government agencies outside of the city of Ketchikan to companies like Advanced Communications when they come to us looking for the service. Something we do frankly a little reluctantly, but we're sensitive to, the council's sensitivity to us being monitored. So, again, we've been in this business for eleven years. When I said in this space, I guess I was being a little bit too metaphorical, but pole space, that's where seventeen to twenty cameras are, is on power poles. That's it. Very, very simple. One exception being the mobotics webcam Ketchikan cameras, which we have installed on some buildings around town. A site that drives in three hundred thousand webcam visitors a year from all over the world, which I think is good for the community in the area.
So, we just do security and surveillance for, um, general government?
That's correct. We're not competing in the private sector to do any kind of home monitoring. The council made that quite clear last year, and in fact, you deleted a CIP from the Telecommunication Division's budget. We got that message loud and clear, and that is not anything we, we're pursuing.
Bob?
So, I noticed in, in one of the statements here, one of the narratives, that, um, we no longer have technicians that are trained to, to work on those cameras. They have retired or moved on to something else, or whatever they're doing?
On the original mobotic cameras, yes. I do have one technician now who is trained, who recently went to training on mobotic cameras, so he's fully trained, back and certified.
And was there another thing in your travel training budget to send somebody else?
Just one, one more person next year. So, that wasn't the entire travel training budget, that was just.
I know, it was just a portion of it, yeah, I understand that. And, and again, um, I think the, the question is, is, and I'm sure they're sensitive to it, the, the contractors that will be training up to enter into the market. If that, right here, if that's not the case, that, that's fine.
We, uh, make every effort to refer anyone else, any customer outside of general government to local contractors for this business. But we have a responsibility to maintain the cameras that are on the poles, and we take that seriously, so, that's that.
And we've been working with ACS as part of this as well, uh, not exclusively with these guys, because some, part of what their, their specialty is, is different than what they work on. So, even putting these budget numbers together, we were working with Kirk Deal.
Okay.
Out of ACS, and so, yeah, we're, we're not trying to not use them. We actually are planning to use them for a good part of this.
Okay, that, that's good. Um, so if a private contractor down the street, or a private entity down the street wanted a security camera, and they came to the city and said, well, we'd like to purchase a pole attachment, we would probably still run the wire for that, correct, on the pole? I mean, I don't know if that happens.
If it was installed on a pole, and it was within the confines of our pole attachment agreement, sure, we'd run, able to it. The, uh, issue you should have in the back of your mind is, every time I turn down this type of business, a camera, and send it off to a local contractor, I'm missing an opportunity to compete for circuit transmission business, because these cameras are connected to circuits. They, and the contractor can get the circuits from us, or GCI. If the contractor loves this, I get the business. If I don't, they get the business.
I understand.
So, I'm turning business down, or potential for business down, for competitive enterprise that you're relying on to be profitable. And you know the rest of the story.
I understand it.
So, you, you need, I would just caution you to be sensitive to that, and as well as, I have to explain this to the people who work for me. In a technical world, these aren't cameras, they're just computers with a lens on. That camera up there is a computer with a lens on. So, you know, we, we see it differently, but we respect it.
I think the direction has been given, and we know what we need to do.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to bring it to light, because there had been some question, and I appreciate your explanation.
You're quite welcome.
Blue, before you bail out, uh, so how many cameras do we, the city, have up?
Twenty five.
Now, do, is the public aware where they all are, or they get some discovery, or some of the secret stuff?
Uh, I think generally the public isn't aware of where, where they are. Steve, I haven't been taken from that.
Well, if you know what they look like, they're pretty obvious where they are.
So, does any, you said?
These aren't little hidden lipstick ones, either.
Well, I, I realize, yeah. Most of us don't work, walk around with our head up in the air.
Actually, a lot of us are, are walk around looking for stuff like this.
I don't have time to do that. But anyway, uh, how many of them does the public have access through, I guess, through the website?
Web P of Ketchikan has six of them.
And the rest of them are only?
The security cameras.
For the city, okay.
Is there a plan for, other than working on the harbors or whatever? Do we have anything other plan to add, any more of these? Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, anything else on the KPU budget?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd move that we apply the same cost of living allowances to the city manager and, uh, city clerk, as was allowed with the general government contract, which is, I believe, if I'm correct, about one point six in two fifteen, two point two percent in two thousand and sixteen, and two percent in two thousand and seventeen.
Second. voted second. We talked of this during, um, evaluations. I'm glad to see the council pulling through. Call or roll.
Seiverton?
Yes.
Kus?
My standard answer is no.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Yes.
That passes four to one. Any other changes? KPU budget.
Is there any other action items on the, uh, budget updates?
I don't think so. Just the one.
Um, I know that we had, and it's probably not an action item, but I know that we had a update on, um, the overtime to see how that was tracking, within the utilities. And, uh, you know, as you, as you look across here, we've seen, um, in KPU, a decline in, in most of these, with a somewhat dramatic increase in the telecommunications. And, and that is somewhat concerning, because it may not be sustainable. I, I don't know. And I know that, uh, where we have a three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one for two fifteen, we budgeted two hundred and sixteen thousand, I believe. And, well, hopefully with this, um, new language that have we have in place, we can be ever so conscious of, of how we maybe mitigate some of the, over-budget spending that we do. And I know that a lot of that directly results, uh, in, to, to. And I know that a lot of that directly results in to service, but I think that going forward, as we look at what's going to happen with our finances in the future, the lack of state stuff, we may be coming to this table with that 95 percent rule, we're going to ask Mr. Amalon that we want 95 percent of last year's budget, and that's going to be substantial changes, so if we can be ever conscious, I think that's a good deal. Dick?
Yeah, just a comment. I know you, Mayor, have, have been talking about the travel and training and the cost of that, and I'm just going to make an assumption, that training and related travel shows up on an employee's training plan or performance evaluation. It shouldn't be, all of a sudden it's there. I mean, I guess that's the way I've always worked it, so it should be identified at the beginning of the year. Joe needs training to improve his performance, or he needs training for this, and so I'm just going to leave it there. It should be showing up somewhere, not just shuffling the cards.
Bob? So, is some of the training that we have, like in electricals for the apprenticeship program, does that come out of our travel and training budget?
I'm not 100 percent sure, but I think that was changed a couple of years ago, and I think we're actually making a contribution through a payment that we make to IBW.
I don't think that's the question. I think when we send an apprentice to school, the expenses incurred in that would be charged to travel and training, I believe.
I, no, I don't, no. Well, when I look at $80,000, and I know these are both, you know, revenue account, and at $90,000, in the way that it's broke down in here, moving forward, again, I think it's more cost efficient if we can bring the training to Ketchikan, instead of taking some of our employees out for other training. So, I guess I'd just like to know, and I don't need to know the cost, but I'd like to know what type of schools we're sending these guys out to, what kind of training we're doing. It'd be nice enough.
We can put something together and let the council know that if there...
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Call the roll on the main motion.
Yes.
Coos?
Yep.
Kifer?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
All right, that passes. I don't think there's anything else on the, you guys covered everything else. Vouchers?
There are none.
There are none. Managers' report.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Steve, if you could come up to the podium if you know. Mr. Mayor, barring an emergency meeting of the council, this would be Mr. Corporon's last meeting as acting Public Works Director.
Yay!
I don't know if you realize it, but...
And that's all a good way.
He has served in this position now for over a year. He was under no obligation to take it. He did so at my request, and I think the city as a whole has benefited greatly from his time in the position. And I want to thank him formally for doing what he did. I think it not only got us through the interim period, but I think he did a lot for the people within the department, and setting a high example of how a director should be. I have something, if you'll bear with me.
Be sure to bear a large bottle of aspirin.
So, Steve, I want to thank you very much for what you did for us.
May I say, just a few brief words. This was unexpected, sorry. It's a good department. They've got some good people working for them. They're responsible, they're good at what they do, they really care about the community. And if I didn't already have a department that was similar, with a good crew, and a job that I love, I would have taken Carl up on the offer to apply last year, you know, for the position. But, it is a little bit too much for one person. I told him at the time, I could do it, but it wasn't going to be sustainable. And the fact that I'm carrying over excess leave this year i- is a testament to that, because the busy season for the departments are opposite of each other, so there's really no downtime. So, I'm glad I could help out, but I am looking forward to taking just a few days off after the first year, but now it looks like I'll be working on some new projects, I guess, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Dick?
Yeah, Steve?
What?
Before you get away, even though I kind of ride you hard sometimes, and some other people too, you to me are an asset to the community, from the city standpoint and what you do in the community, so just thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Huh, where are we? Carl, that was your manager's report?
Yeah, it was. It was in the studio.
All right, City Clerk's file?
I just wanted to remind the council that we have a new website launched, and we've had really positive feedback. Few bugs to work out yet, but as a general rule, it's all working really well.
I walked in the manager's office, and he was cussing at it, but I don't know what that meant.
I wouldn't know.
City Attorney's file, I'm afraid to ask this one tonight.
New treasure.
That makes two of us.
Oh, geez. Mayor and Council, at Monday night's meeting and discussing the local options that municipalities can elect to put in place in, as far as local control of the commercial aspect of the marijuana initiative, as I was asked to do then, and as I did, I posed some of the questions to the Marijuana Control Board, their executive director, sent off an email Tuesday morning. Heard back later in the day that Cynthia was involved in meetings that day, but would get back to me, apparently she's not been able to do that. I didn't hear, and I called and left a voice message sometime in the middle of the afternoon. Aside from that, though, I think the basic sort of timeframe, time marches on, remains the same, which is, at the end of February, those that are interested would be submitting applications to the Alcohol Board, and it may be cleanest if this body wants additional time to put at least some form of pro temporary ordinance exercising any of those options in place to be effective before the end of February. I know there's some discussion that we would take another look at it in March. But as I said, time marches on. If it seems advisable to do that, and to do it prior to applications being submitted in February, the council would need to take up something dealing with that the first meeting in January. It doesn't necessarily have to be permanent. One option that was touched upon briefly would be essentially to have a sunset clause. When you do that, the ordinance would expire unless it's extended. It would be extended by an ordinance, so you would need some timeframe in there. All that taken into consideration, I guess if I get some concurrence tonight, I could have ready an ordinance touching on those issues, and perhaps additional information from the state, and put it on for the January, first regular meeting in January. That's where I think we are. I don't know that some of the mind-numbing details I was trying to get from the state will change that very much. As they do, I can include it in a transmittal with draft ordinance.
So, you're thinking that we should have something on the January, first meeting in January, and you'll try to gain more information before that? That would have us have a moratorium on it, and have a sunset at a certain date, so we have time to...
Yeah, that would...
Just in case somebody applies before our March time.
It would make it cleaner to my mind, assuming that the council at least temporarily wants to go, you know, or to preserve that, to have an opportunity to see what actually gets signed as the regulations.
Well, I understand. I'd like to see you put something on there, so we can discuss it. Do we have four council members that would like to see that on there, to...
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would be on a jet at that time of our meeting on January 7th, and I would just ask that we defer it to the next meeting?
Will that follow up timeline for getting an ordinance?
It wouldn't work.
No, it takes two regular meetings plus 30 days, assuming that the...
We're going to have two meetings.
Eight, one.
Two meetings. So, you can vote to get it on the second reading, on the second meeting. Okay, so do we have four hands? And we're talking about, yeah, put it together, and we'll all get to discuss it. Everybody will understand it by January 6th.
I care a lot using the word discussion, don't I?
Yes, no. I understand what we're trying to do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to future gen items. We just got one. Mayor and Council comments. Dick?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Judy?
Merry Christmas, and I'll see you in the new year.
He's had a cold special week.
The hell he is.
Just one thing, there will be an open house at the Ketchikan Chamber office that's in the mall, and it's Wednesday, this Wednesday, two days before Christmas, noon to 1:30, and it's a complimentary lunch on the chamber, if anyone wants to come.
Bob? Yeah, it's been a busy week. I had an opportunity to talk to with Mr. Keel, who sits on the pension trust for the State of Alaska. And I think yesterday there was a meeting in Juneau in regards to PERS, and what the state is proposing, and how they're going to manage that. And of course, one of the biggest concerns for the municipalities is they're wanting to direct that obligation back to the municipalities. And our borough, Mr. Erickson, Scottman Erickson, and Mr. Bockhorst have been working on this with some considerable effort in representing that at the meeting. So, and it would be a huge liability for our communities, and I don't see any way that the state can get away from their obligation to that. They are the managers of that PERS and TERS retirement program, and it should not come back to our municipalities in a matter of a day. That's a big deal to keep a watch on for. Thank you, Bob. Dave?
Merry Christmas, everybody. I'm glad the budget is out of the way, at least temporarily. And I'm looking forward to starting the community agency grant discussion, which we're very into. Then I'm also looking forward to, in a few months, a year or so, having almost a brand-new museum.
All right. I got, something was bugging me this weekend, I, and this is a Christmas holiday time, it's a religious time. I've been talking on this potish and everything, and people are, and we had expressed about the separation of church and state. And I thought this would be a good time to just talk. I didn't get a chance to do my State of the City speech at the chamber this year, so I'm dying to talk. So, I gotta, I hope you have a couple of minutes. And I know not...
Great.
And when everybody, anybody says separation of church and state, I, my radar goes up, because I know probably 90 percent of the people in this country don't know that it's not in the Constitution. And it goes, I mean, the philosophy of this goes way back, I mean, I was doing some reading about it. And it started, the first time it was ever mentioned of anything like a wall or a hedge between government, church started back in a book in 1644 by a Baptist theologian named Roger Williams. No relation. And then the, and then the next time it was brought up is Thomas Jefferson in a letter to the Danbury Baptist Association, and where he officially did say separation between church and state in his letter. And what is that separation, a church and state that one of the directors of the Constitution was talking about, is in our First Amendment, and it's the Establishment Clause, which forbids government to sponsor a church or religion. You know, they had the Old English Church, and they, you know, Church of England, and they didn't want that. And then they had the Free Exercise Clause, which forbids the government from forcing us to be in a religion, free will, which God gave us. And that are the two things that are in the, there's no other thing about religion. It does not imply or to exclude religion or religious people from doing public affairs with the state. And so, I was reading more about this. And so, when somebody talks about church and state, you know, we don't have to take religious people out of the process, or beliefs. The nation was, is a Christian, it was, Christian nation was formed that way, and it's been blessed because of it. And it seems like lately, I mean, I'm not just talking locally, but nationally, as I watch the news and everything, you know, people are really, you know, they don't want religion or church in government, but, you know, this government was, this government that we have, and is based on Christian values. And it's been free for everybody to have free will, and it's prospered. So, it's, I'm sort of discouraged to hear that. And so, I encourage you to, you know, it's the Christmas holiday, it's the, you know, in the Christian religion, it's the birth, the celebration of the birth of Jesus Christ. So, I encourage everybody to discover what those values are. If you're looking for a meaning in your life or whatever, you know, this is a good time to go to a Baptist church. And there's one on First Avenue where I go, and I invite any of you guys to join me. There's one Gateway Baptist up on Byrd, and there's many other different congregations that you can, you know, check this out. And because of this religious connection, you know, the United States let you, let you, you know, free express. And so, I can go and say Happy Hanukkah to somebody, I can say Happy Edah, I think that's the way it's pronounced, for the day, the celebration of the day after Ramadan ends, and I can say Merry Christmas. And I'm proud and happy for that in this country, that we can do that. And you can say Bah Humbug, no problem. So, I just wanted to say that, because for some reason, I've been watching it a lot, and then I heard at the meeting the other night, and so I just had to express my thought on it. And then I would just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope everybody's New Year is great. And thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Dick, did you have something?
Well, I want to echo just what you just said. And if we would take a look at what federal legislators do, what the state legislators do, they all have a pastor of different denominations standing there at every meeting. There's nothing wrong with it. And maybe we ought to think about it. Because one person can't drive the whole nine yards, and that's what's going on in this country.
Because one thing bothers me, you know, you can't force you to sign up to a religion, but they can force you to buy hope.
That's weird, government.
Yeah, we are.